All right, well, welcome all. Our second of the year joint school committee town number crunching collaboration and affirmation of titles. Thank you all for spending the time today. From our school committee side, we put together a proposed agenda. I didn't hear any other additional agenda items for the town, but we can always entertain those as we go along. So I have that in front of you. I figured since the first item we have is the Chapter 70 letter. For those online, I'm sorry, I didn't. I brought a paper version, but I just wanted to say for the Chapter 70 letter, thank you all for your consideration from the Essex Selectment and from the Manchester Board. And the version you have in front of you is the latest version. It does not include the CEY ability to pay commentary. It has a few edits to phrasing and a few details. We are still in yellow. Our items that Pam and Michelle are still working to figure out, specifically the, you know, the percent increases in special education is one. That's not just an obvious budget line that you go to and change. So they're doing some work to get a decent proxy there. So hopefully we'll have that ASAP and we'll be able to submit this to DESI as a joint letter. So this is the most recent version. If you want to take a moment to peruse or follow up, obviously it's not final. So if you want to follow up after this meeting with any concerns or edits, please feel free to do so. But I'll give you a moment to skim it and then we. Do you have any questions we can ask from here?
Does anybody have any idea who the two Manchester by the C people are?
I think it's probably the system here.
I'm on as Manchester by the C.
Just want to make sure I'm not missing someone.
Yeah, no.
Ooh, ooh, roll, Sarah. Is that two seats?
Is Tony coming?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Great.
Okay, you can go down and check.
Okay.
Do you want me to go?
No, better yet.
Chapter 70?
Better yet. Text him. This is what.
He may not have had it on his radar.
I knew you were the smartest person in the room. She's texting him.
Actually, it's a.
Answering your phone.
That's what he's doing, yeah.
He couldn't come in because he's on the phone. Oh, yeah.
You just call him?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is this C line?
Yeah, or that one.
Or this one up here, either way. Up here is guaranteed to be on camera. We're just like, just taking a quick look at the revised Chapter 70 letter. I know I should put Manchester by the C at the top.
Yes.
And just to make sure, so you did send this to Brendan?
I did not yet. I just brought it here. Sorry, I didn't, didn't realize it was going to be remote. We'll follow it up.
Stupid correction, but in the second to last paragraph, first line is to our.
Second to last paragraph, starting with state funding and assumptions?
Yeah, state funding and assumptions is squeezing.
That's who I have.
Yeah, right. But that's a plural subject.
Our squeezing, gotcha, okay. There are multiple things there, yes, gotcha. All right, any other concerns, questions, clarifications?
Let's come up with those reviews today. We'll prioritize that.
Sure, excellent, thank you.
And so is this just a general ask for more or? I mean, I know we're stating what we get, but is that what our hope is? Is to be able to see if they'll give these?
I mean, ultimately, if they adjust the percentages, that's the end goal, yes. All right, so hearing no other comments, questions, concerns, we will, once Pam and Michelle get us the final percentages on those little, those yellow details, we will forward the final version to you all and submit it to DESI on behalf of everybody in the faculty, everybody.
I guess I just wondered whether or not we want to say it would be helpful if it could be increased by, but you.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we would frame a target in that regard.
I think we're asking fiscal choice to go up to the actual cost, so that's.
That's something.
No, that's a target.
Although that's technically not Chapter 70, but.
Right.
Yeah, we've included it here as context, yeah. Okay, thank you all. So next on our list then is a preview or a review of the tentative FY '27 school budget that Pam and Michelle presented to us at our last meeting. We wanted to share it here. It will be the subject of our hearing on Wednesday evening, but we wanted to bring it to you all to preview any issues or questions that may arise that would be helpful to specify in the hearing or to target in the hearing or, you know, just in the general spirit of collaboration, are there things that we should all be thinking about based on that? So I'll turn it over to Pam and/or Michelle to give a broad overview. And in this context, our school committee has kept this at a very broad level at this point. We are not in the details and so Chris and I are not here prepared to speak to specifics and, you know, Pam and Michelle can speak to what they are willing to speak to, but in terms of the budget, it's still quite broad to give you a sense of, of what's driving the budget and some assumptions that we're making at this early stage. Broad and early.
Broad and early, that's my, those are my lead bullet points. It's kind of the progress report as we're starting to put together the budget. Tony, this might be probably most helpful for you because I think everyone in the room has probably, has been through a few cycles. But this is typically our high watermark where we think worst case scenario, based on some conservative estimates of large variables that we don't really have details on yet. I don't think there's anything that we haven't already talked about with this group, so I don't think we necessarily need to go through the whole slideshow except to say that our goal is to have a maintenance of effort budget, meaning we'd like to keep everything moving forward. It includes level staffing with the exception of a .3 increase in speech-language pathologist, which comes from moving things in and out of the operational budget. We've had these services. There are years where we can find someone, where it lands on the FTE side. There are years where we can't find someone to hire full-time and it lands in contracted services. So looking at the numbers early, it looks like we'll be returning .3 FTE to the staffing line. Other than that, we're looking at holding staffing level for next year with the caveat that just because the total staffing is level doesn't mean everybody ends up in the same place. We do what we do every year, which is as issues or issues, as priorities or needs emerge throughout the second half of the year, we'll look at our total staffing and address priority needs by hope, if possible, reallocating people from one location to another so that our greatest needs are met without doing, putting additional dollars into the budget. Caveat on top of the caveat, special education is a very fluid variable and right now we think we have it all. We think we know what we know. It will change in February and it'll likely change again by May. That's one of the areas we'll try to use internal staffing shifts to address. If something pops up, if not, we will bring it to the school committee. Enrollment seems to be plateauing. It went down just a smidge. I mean, went up just a smidge, the shape of the station staying down, which seems to be aligning with the MSBA enrollment report that looks like we will plateau and then start to grow slowly over the next few years. Other than that, do you want to run through the numbers for them in terms of total budget?
Yeah, I mean, we can do high-level budgets. Overall, the total operating budget increase is 7.39% in this tentative budget. Personnel side is 5.1% and operational side is 11% for that combined 7.39%. The high item on the operational side is the health insurance. We are budgeting a 20% premium increase at this time. We are working to see what we might be able to do to bring that down. And we're having some great conversations with that right now. Special ed overall actually has a small slight decrease and that's not because our special ed costs have necessarily gone down. We have had a few students that have graduated from our programs, reducing our total headcount, but our circuit breaker is also larger than the past year or two. It's roughly 1.2 million, so that's offsetting a part of the cost. When we have a larger amount of students in last year than we do this year, we're getting a larger increase, a larger percentage back. So it might skew the actual, you know, operational cost or operational change for special education. So that is down slightly this year. We can go through, actually like the. I'm just going to focus on page one, which is the key budget drivers. Just touch a couple things on that. So as I mentioned, total operating budget, 7.39%. Revenues are large revenues. Chapter 70 state aid, we're anticipating 4.87% just because last year we got $150 per student, so we want to bring that up to where we actually believe we're getting next year. And the total assessment to the towns would be 7.94% with this operational budget of 7.39% increase. The expenditure side of it, as I mentioned, the personnel is 5.1% increase. That is a COLA of 2.5% for all union members as well as non-union members. The union members have steps and lane increases as well if they change their educational degree, changes them from one lane to another. Operational expenses, we have the health insurance, the benefits and other insurance overall. That increase is 16.65%. That includes the 20% increase in the health insurance premium that was calculated. Also in here is the Essex Regional Retirement with, I estimated, 9%. It came in just under that, almost right at nine. We received that late Friday. Workers' comp liability, unemployment, anticipating that for about 3%. That might actually be able to come down a teeny bit, but where the total increase is 8,400, we're not talking lots of dollars, but it can come down maybe a few dollars. As I mentioned, our out-of-district tuition and transportation, we're looking at a decrease of 2.2%. That is because primarily we had some students graduate from the programs, but as well, we're receiving last year's circuit breaker. Next year, we'll be receiving this year's circuit breaker, which is higher before those students leave our program at the end of this year. Operational facilities, anticipating a 3.14% increase. The biggest percentage increase in that category is security with just over a 9% increase, but really that's $8,000 and that is connected to the cost of the SRO. So we are billed from the police department, the SRO salary and the percentage she actually works for us. So if she's getting a COLA plus a step increase, that essentially is passed on to us, so we can't really regulate what, what she's paid or what that increase is. Utilities, we're projecting a 5.6% increase and custodial supplies and maintenance is 7.4%. Part of that is our contracted services for all of our custodians. And that typically goes up about 3% a year, 3% to 4%. I believe next year, we're actually putting that up to bid. So it's caveat there, we're really not sure what it's going to cost next year. Last two categories, we have technology and then others. So technology is primarily our hardware, our software, our devices. The only increase we're anticipating in this line is the cost of an iPad lease. Most of our iPads were purchased through, during the COVID time period through funds made available to us for technology and facilities at that time. Most of our iPads are no longer available to be updated, which is making them unusable with our assessment software as of next year. So we need to upgrade our, all of our iPads. And the total cost for three-year lease to upgrade all of them is $26,000 over three years. So that's that one increase in the technology area. And the rest is other, and that includes legal costs, our regular transportation, our curriculum costs. So next year, we are going into negotiations. I believe I added $25,000 increase for negotiation and legal costs. We have a $40,000 cost for piloting some new curriculum programs in math and science, I believe. And then our transportation contract is going out to bid. So in the next month or so, we'll be releasing a few documents for transportation services. So we're expecting them to go up a little bit more than they would normally. Normally it'd be a 3% to 4% increase. So we're expecting it to go up a little bit higher than that this year. And really, that touches on almost every single increase in our budget this year. I can't think of anything else that has been built into this number. And as Pam mentioned, hopefully this is our high watermark. We can try to whittle it down. Hopefully we'll get some more guidance with our health insurance. Right now, this is what we have. And I should also mention, we are using $600,000 in E and D funds to offset this budget scenario at this point. So the increase to the towns includes that $600,000 of E and D use as well as $150,000 of OPEB use. So certainly those are up for discussion with the school committee, but at the current time, that's what Pam and I decided to bring forward.
True carry forward.
Yes. Exactly. It's what's built in the current budget.
And just to be clear, the OPEB is a $150,000 reduction in our contribution.
Yes, if needed. So if it's not needed with, with our health insurance and it goes back to OPEB as a full contribution, if it's needed in health insurance at the very end of the year, then we do not form a full OPEB contribution with that $150,000. So it's not, it's not a savings either way.
And what's your funding rate annually for OPEB?
It depends on our health insurance increase. Whatever our health insurance is then applied to what our old rates would have cost us, our old plans versus what our current plans cost based on the number of members. So it's kind of a tricky little formula. But overall, we are contributing between 700 and 800,000 a year at the current.
And the current liability here, what percentage funded?
We owe roughly 20 million at this point and we are about 8 million funded, 7 million funded at the end of last year.
Big picture, questions, clarifications, concerns, clashes with town approaches or needs?
I have a question on enrollment. So I'm looking at the enrollment report in your tentative budget. And so you have for '25, '26, 1156. And last year is being reflected as 1109. And I thought that you had made a correction last year on that 1109 number. Been represented as 1190, so I'm just wondering what the right number is.
No, there is, it's a different formula. 1190 and 1109 were both correct last year. It was, the correction we issued was a percentage. It was in the column on the enrollment history. It did not take into account sped tuition in, I believe, school choice out and sped out of district. So that skewed the formula percentage increases when we look at the percentages. The numbers did not change. Overall, the counts were the counts. It's when we look at the sped tuition out as well as the school choice in that we got the 1109. I believe it was actually 1108 versus the 1190.
But we can move back.
Yeah, but I like triple-checked that last year because I was also like 1109 to 1190. I thought it was a little funny.
Right, well, that's why I remembered it and I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
I wasn't following along and.
The correction was on the enrollment history percentages.
Okay, so in '23, '24, we had 1199 and then we went down 90 students last year. And then we got.
I don't know, I think we should check it. I know what you're saying. It seems like something's off.
Well, because I, I remember asking the question that we had a decrease in enrollment by 90 and I don't think that that's correct. But since these are numbers that drive our assessment.
Yeah, we'll double-check that.
And then Pam, you said, I missed the whole sentence. Three teachers are coming, .3, .3.
Of an S of a speech-language pathologist is coming back on the.
Back on the.
FTE list.
Yeah.
Because they were funded elsewhere.
Yeah, the position was cut to a .7 a few years ago. We contracted out for a portion of it. We're going to bring that back in. Because of 1.0, it's difficult to find a .7 SLP.
Small question on the transportation contract that's going out. That when do you expect to get those numbers in? And would that then, is that for the upcoming fiscal year?
Yes, yep. So hopefully, going to start writing the specifications the next couple of weeks or release it in January, hopefully have something in February.
For how long does that last?
The base is usually a three-year. We've been talking to a couple of vendors and they said you may end up getting more favorable results if you have a five to 10-year contract. Typically, that's not something we enter into that long, so we are going to be discussing that to see if we want more than three to five years.
So last year, you cut the facilities position, is that correct?
Yes.
The $100,000 facilities position? So in listening to your last meeting, I heard that some of that money was repurposed for other people in the budget? I just want to understand that a little bit more.
You were talking about the active facilities line, which at budget time last year, we had taken the full reduction and put in a general pool, some set-aside funds, but now we assigned it back to the facilities line for next year to cover increase in salaries for increased responsibilities for the two remaining people.
So you've reduced the budget by the 100,000 and then reuse some other money out of the facilities money?
Okay, great, thank you. So I think, Will, you were going through this. Something to just remember is this is, this year's, or the projected FY '27 budget against the adopted budget. So whatever it was in March of last year is what that percentage increased. It's not a percentage increase in costs necessarily. It's a percentage increase against last year's budgeted figure.
Okay, right, because when we were talking about the position cuts, we were talking about the middle school principal as well as the facilities manager.
That was my next question.
So that was a $200,000 savings, but their salaries weren't exactly 200,000. A piece of that was actually.
The gross deficit.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I figured.
So, yes.
Okay, and then I, so I, the conversation I remembered was that we are going to do one more year of a, an interim middle school principal and reevaluate. And the conversation I heard at your last meeting was that you were looking to increase, potentially increase the salary for a middle school principal to attract. So is that?
Didn't say that. I didn't say that.
I heard of more, I heard of potential for more money.
Someone asked if we increased it.
We. What the salary, if we determined a salary range, I think, is what Kate asked me. So we, I said we were going to use what the current figure is this year. That's the intent and if we wanted to discuss it further, we should certainly go.
So we're keeping the middle school principal?
Yeah, it's already budgeted.
Yes.
And it's already budgeted this year. So we didn't lose any, there's no, shouldn't be too much fluctuation.
And then there were another conversation regarding middle school about potentially having middle school kids be able to take classes at the high school, is that?
The high school's proposing, if we have appropriate staffing, maybe piloting some 612 courses, like a drama course with existing staff. So a lot of things need to line up. So it was, it would be nice to try if we maintain the same schedule alignment and that there's staff available to meet the needs of both the middle and high school.
You were already doing that. Based on the play I just went to.
That's all after school.
That's all.
This would be like a course during the day that 612 could sign up for. So right now, we have someone with the new alignment of the schedule working between teaching some world language at the middle school and some world language at the high school. Thinking is next year, if we have a teacher with a block that could teach between the two buildings, like we used to do art way back or PE, you would just be able to take the course if you had it free in your schedule, if you were in the middle school or the high school. So we have a couple of steps to go before we confirm the schedule for next year, but something they'd like to try because we think that's an advantage of the current schedule alignment that we could maybe look at elective opportunities for kids at the middle school and the high school and blend them together.
And our, and our middle school is still a middle school and not a junior high.
Absolutely, correct. Yep, which is going to be a limiter to when kids have time available in their schedule. So it'll have to be kind of a hand.
It just seems, it seems counter to me if you're going, you want a middle school because you want them to slowly move up into high school versus a junior high. It just seems counter.
I think around the performing arts, we're trying to look and maintain open minds because of the numbers of kids, similar to athletics. We had a long conversation about an analogy to athletics. We, if you're a student athlete starting in seventh grade, you have the ability to play up if, you know, if there's space and you can make the qualification. There's a part of performing arts that is exploratory, which we want to keep at the middle school, but then there's also a part that has to do with time and investment and, you know, similar to athletics. So is there opportunity there to create some larger grade level spans? And maybe it's something like it needs the ninth grade experience somewhere along the lines. So I think it's experimental and it's trying to be innovative. I don't think there's anything written in stone.
And right, and right now, no budget implications, just opportunity given in program design.
And the same with the graduation requirement for arts and performing arts would be no budget implication, just a change in your graduation requirement.
Just requires a student to actually ensure that they take something.
Yeah. Thank you.
Others?
Have you always paid for the SRO?
A half, half, you pay half or full?
No, it's not full-time.
Contract service for the time they're here.
Right.
For the school year time.
So I think she's full-time during the school year.
Yeah.
For the schools, but in the summer, she's a town expense.
Vacations, things like that.
Right.
Yeah, so it's like 180 days.
Yep. So she is in the buildings, one of the three buildings?
Mostly the middle high school and then like by scheduling with the principal, trips to the other buildings.
This is kind of a rude question. What does she do?
Chuck the words out.
Fair question.
It's everything from general security, crisis planning, when you think of kind of her police background. And then there's a lot of, I think along the lines of what the community is trying to establish with the community building. She works a lot with some of our more at risk kids or kids who might be known to the officers on the weekend. So she holds office hours. She's present in lunch duty. We, she is the manager of the comfort dog. So she does support counseling. And I would say mentor mentorship, mentor menteeship is kind of the general bucket we would put her day to day work in in hopes of being able to reach kids who might be vulnerable for at risk behavior. And then building relationships with the, with the younger kids on.
And do we have any type of process of understanding whether or not there's a return on investment? Are we seeing something, you know, like is there reporting? Is there anything?
Yeah, I, I, she's evaluated annually. But that's her performance based on what she's being asked to do. There's open and honest communication with the chiefs of both towns. Because I think there's a piece of it too that has to do with student. Student discipline is owned by the school, but there's a lot that happens when they're not in school and she's our point of contact there. So there is a lot of, there's a lot of communication that has to take place between the stations. Everything from a family at risk situation to students getting in trouble on the weekends at the beach or at a party in Essex. And she runs point with each of the departments to make sure we have all the right information. I don't know that we have tried to create a metric to say this works, this doesn't, we should get rid of it. We can bring it up for consideration in a past budget hearing. And it was viewed to be very valuable at the time. We think it's, it's a help, we think the project is working. We started this not too long ago. And we're consistent with other school districts on having at least one dedicated officer to the building.
Can we just check and make sure the people online can still hear us?
Sure.
This little pop up box came up.
I can.
You can?
Yeah, everything's been, we, we've heard all of this.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you for checking.
But if you have.
Sounds like there's another meeting.
Ideas or some direct.
That's why I went to get reinforcements.
If there's something you'd want to know more about, something in particular.
Honestly, Pam, it's the same thing I said when I was on the school committee because we're a small community. I, I, you know, we, we have a resource officer, but they're only in the Manchester schools. Technically, they, they have to be.
No, not this.
As a project for the others, you know, for Essex, I just.
No, it was at the request of the elementary principals, that there wasn't as much of a need for her to just be onsite and circulating around. That they wanted, it was their preference at, at the elementary level to schedule her to be present either to do readings, community events with the kids, time with the comfort dog, rather than just have it be drop in visits. So that was the internal group that determined that that was the best way to work her schedule. Because she's built, I mean, she's kind of trying to satisfy four different principals and their way of working. So we've had to do some internal work to create more consistency about how we all do things too. So she does spend time in Essex. Essex also has a presence in the schools on their own. In terms of, I know that they're doing outreach and that they, they meet regularly with Kim on crisis planning as well.
All right, well, thank you all. Other high level questions, concerns?
Only thing I would add is the S R O came from Manchester because that was who had the capacity at the time. And that was a joint decision between the chiefs and the school. If it's something that we'd like to look at and rotate and go in like terms, like two years on, two years off and rotate it between the two towns, we could certainly look at that as well.
That would be a challenge because the town would have to get rid of a person.
Right.
Well, we're kind of down too.
Or hire a person.
But, you know, that from a personnel standpoint, you're, you're having to move an employee out if it's not covered by the S R O position.
And imagine the effect on the emotions of the comfort dog. Well, there need to be two.
That's very true.
Okay, so then next, from our conversation at school committee, school committee members raised a few questions that we have for towns that will help us frame and think about the budget going forward. And I've listed those here so I don't get them wrong. The, the questions really center around kind of alignment with kind of town expectations and practices. And so this is, you know, for information, not to be, we don't expect to have an answer here today. You're welcome to. But this is more to frame it and, and, you know, think about the hearing and going forward. So the questions are, are really about, first of all, do the towns have any unusual, unexpected operational budget drivers this year? Clearly, health insurance is on everybody's mind and likely yours as well. We've already heard some of that. How are the towns approaching budgeting with departments? You've heard from us, you know, we're continuing our approach of this maintenance of services, level services, various labels we've given it. You know, how is or isn't that consistent with how towns are approaching budgeting? How do the town's current E and D balances relate to reserve policy target? You've heard Pam and Michelle say we've made an assumption to start that we will commit to ours. That does take us well below our target. And so we, you know, we're, we're weighing pros and cons of continuing, we've had that strategy for the past five or so years. We're weighing a little bit of pros and cons about how far into the future we can carry that strategy. And a lot of that has to do with whether or not we maintain a reserve balance that we think is appropriate. So, so understanding your approaches to that and thoughts behind that will be helpful in thinking about ours. And then what is each town's progress and strategy towards O P E B? As, as Michelle noted, we're doing a second year of slowing our contribution potentially to O P E B. You know, we, we've had a commitment to that all along. But, you know, how does that relate to how you as towns are, are thinking about and approaching O P E B strategy? And then finally, on the assumption that, you know, we're close to eight percent town assessment, is that likely to trigger an override request from each town? Right, that'll, that'll help us think about planning for this coming year and potentially into the future. So not expectations for today for responding to those. You're welcome to if you'd like. But we wanted to frame them and, and put them on your radar as things to potentially speak to as we go into the budget process.
Can I just add a question? And that is, you had mentioned that the lane changes. Do you have an idea of how many lane changes you're going to be looking at for your staffing?
Estimated it, or I estimated it for the tentative because the deadline was November fifteenth and I already had that line item solidified. Usually it costs us about between fifty and seventy five thousand a year, believe it or not.
To accommodate the lane changes that happen typically.
That are, yes, that happen. Because we get, we get a bunch of requests. We approve them so they can go take the courses. So they are on our radar, but unless they actually fulfill those courses and get the transcripts and pass the courses, they do not get granted the lane change. So we don't put every single request that comes in into the budget because we know that there's going to be a handful that do not go forward. What is the amount of step changes? I don't have that exact figure, I think, but I can get that.
It's usually around one and a half to two.
One and a half to two what?
Percent.
Okay, increase.
Yeah, I mean, the typical formula is two and a half cola with a one and a half percent lane change, a step change. But then compounded for the lane change.
Which is how you get defined. Yes. Plus, this is also the last year of our, or going into our last year of our collective bargaining agreement where we restructured the pay scale and we reduced it from, I believe it was, was it thirteen or fourteen steps originally? And it's going down to eleven steps in total. So some of those people, unfortunately, who are at a step eleven now will remain at a step eleven. But the people who are also at tens are going to elevens. So it's, they're all not getting the same, same.
Is there, is there still a longevity bonus?
There is a longevity amount. Hasn't changed in a number of years, but yes.
I think we don't have any upcoming unusual or unexpected.
Well, yes, we do.
I do, yeah.
We, we have, yeah, we have fire department budget issues. And we have on our capital side, even though it's not operating, it impacts our tax rate. It looks like we're going to have to include at least seven million additional in our capital budget for grants we've lost. So we have to appropriate the money. We're certainly hoping we could get other offsetting grants. But at this point, the grants we were expecting aren't there. And there may be other grants. Because we get a lot from the federal government being on the coast. So that's a big one. We haven't seen the budget yet.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Tony will be inserting the seven point nine seven percent into the budget he gives us on Monday. So we can see what the impact is.
Everything's unusual today. But certainly capital is a big piece. Health insurance is a big piece. You know, we're approaching the, dealing with the department heads, we're approaching it the same way. Asking for basically a level fund on services, a two and a half percent cola adjustment. And then we're evaluating requests as they come in, anything above that really closely.
I can add O P E B, oh, I can add O P E B to that.
Speak to that, so.
Three sixty this year and then about one fifty next year. And then we can start drawing it out.
To fully fund it.
It should be fully funded by fiscal year twenty eight. Which then means we can pay the retiree medical premiums out of it, which are, I mean, we're talking about a swing of about six hundred grand, I think, between what we've been putting in and what we can.
And Essex is in that same boat. You know, we just put a huge slug in this year. And, you know, the bar has moved a little bit because of health insurance rates. But it, you know, it is our philosophy that we, the sooner we get to fully funded for O P E B, the sooner we can free up some levy capacity on one end and free cash on the other. And for that, that delta for us is between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars. And that's key for us because we, we have our backs to the wall on levy capacity. This budget, you know, this tentative budget increase to Essex is more than double our levy, our, our levy increase in its entirety. So, you know, if you did nothing else and kept everything the same, we would be looking at the same override that we had last year, almost essentially the same number as we had last year. And our budget drivers are a little bit similar to yours. We have fire department budget issues, but we're clearly still a call department. We do staff based on shifts. But, you know, we don't have a union at the moment. We don't have a full time chief. We're looking at adding a single full time P M T slash fire prevention officer. And that would be our first full time position, but that yet hasn't been slotted into our budget, but has been floated. We are in a deficit for fifty thousand dollars, first fifty thousand dollars of the school budget because we drained the stabilization fund last year, knowing that that wasn't a great idea to have money in stabilization and using it for operating. We have, we're looking for D P W superintendent, as you know. No chortling over there, Sarah.
Which may also impact our budget.
Correct. Sorry. And we did an increase at our annual town meeting, right, in our, at our fall town meeting. And we have yet to secure an individual. So we have that increase that is eating up into our levy capacity for next year's budget. Same with our harbor master. We wrapped our harbor master back into our public safety with our police chief. And that budget had been trimmed and trimmed and trimmed because we were having some harbor issues. And now we're building that harbor budget back up. So that's eating into our capacity. Basically, you know, with my rough numbers, we've got like a four hundred and, I don't know what it was, four hundred and seven thousand dollar levy increase. And if you take half of that for the town, I'm already at, without the full time position for fire, we, and not the colas, we need a hundred thousand dollars before we get out of the gate to match what we've already cobbled together from fall town meeting and changes. And same, and same as Manchester, we've got an open position in police and we're having trouble filling it. So we're, health insurance, we're carrying fifteen percent. We've told our departments to level fund. We're at a two percent cola, not a two and a half. And we have all of our, you know, we have nowhere to go. We have thirty five full time employees. So you can run, but can't hide. Not in Essex.
We're carrying twenty percent on health insurance. That's what we've been advised to do. I, you know, the capital side of it, I know you're asking for unexpected operational budget drivers, but I look at the capital side of things linked into your final question here about an override request. You know, those, those types, it's, I look at it as at a higher level of how many, how many times you're asking the voters to say yes to additional money, whether it's for operational needs or for capital needs. And we're going to be asking a lot of that over the next couple of years, a few years with, on the capital side too. So it's just another, you know, with the school and, and operational needs, you know, it's just another way to look at it.
I think from our viewpoint, we look at the impact to the total tax rate. And it really, from a taxpayer's standpoint, really doesn't matter whether it's a debt exclusion or an increase to prop two and a half. You're still increasing the tax.
Right.
And the policy has traditionally been to hold the debt service relatively flat. And our goal was to offset decreases in debt service with new debt service. But unfortunately, with the grant funding the way it is and with stuff we can't wait any longer on, and we've used up most of our reserves. We've used up most of our levy, excess levy capacity. I mean.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're on the same, same, no access.
But I'm sure Tony's going to come in with a really low budget.
Very, very tight, 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 Tony.
I, I look at, you know, we're looking at utilities, you know, is another big one of, for us, you know, we're looking at a potential, I haven't even talked to you about it yet, but a potentially like utility reserve account that would be held with the accountant's office or finance director's office because every department is kind of estimating differently as to how much they should put budget for utilities, not knowing what the rates are going to be and how cold it's going to be and those types of things. So we're trying to kind of keep it as level within each department as possible. I look at health insurance, similar. Unfortunately, we're in, we're at a, we're in a peak period. But, you know, long term thinking, how can we, how can we do things to kind of help us absorb these peaks in the future? You know, we're looking at that too. So while also trying to get a lay of the land as to what, you know, the town is comfortable with, you know, as far as how they approach different issues, so we've got a lot of work to do.
Aren't we still negotiating two or three contracts?
Three of our.
Three of our four.
Three of our four contracts, negotiating that now, yeah.
We settled both of ours, so. And we, last year was a, an adjustment in our utility costs. And we actually stepped in and did the across the board adjustments on the budget for the percentage increases. Some departments weren't too happy about the way we went and did it across the board. But we knew we had negotiated, you know, and not to the better. but we knew we had negotiated, you know, and not to the better, new utility rates. So it was, we had that big increase last year. So health insurance clearly is a, is a huge driver for us and, you know, filling some of the positions. And we, unlike other communities, Essex is very cash-based. So we try not to go into some debt service if we don't need to. So we just purchased, approved a purchase of our tanker truck, because 40% of our town doesn't have town water. So our tanker truck was over 30 years old and gets called out to every other town that doesn't have a tanker truck. And it got called out a lot over the last few years and, and broke down and we couldn't get parts for it. And it was our third year not getting the grant, so we approved $650,000 as a outright cash purchase. But we feel, you know, we have a lot of stabilization accounts, so that we can fund along the way the repairs to buildings and the vehicles that we purchase. And we have revised some of our fleet management, so that we have a better handle on where we are, where we need to be, and where we're funding those purchases as we go. We like to, we love the pay as we go. The finance committee calls it the envelope system. We're still operating in the envelope system, but it's working. So far, it's, it's worked for Essex, it's worked for a long time, so. But the debt, you know, our debt service, you laugh, but it's.
We don't do the envelope.
I know you don't.
We charge them the taxes when the expenses are incurred.
And, and, you know, that's why our public safety building is a lot cheaper. So I guess we're, you know, we don't have a lot of moving parts, there's many moving parts, I think, as Manchester does. And we don't have a lot of debt service, except for the buildings that we have. And we're, you know, planned carefully for the debt service. It is, you know, super important for Essex that, you know, the Essex Elementary School project that we've waited for, for 25 years is here. And however that plays out with school building committee, you know, that's imminent. So I, our debt service is falling off. And so that's giving a little bit of a breather as far as tax rate, that they may have seen a much larger jump in that. It'll be a little bit artificial, and then if you bring on that debt service. You know, because again, we, we're having trouble keeping it level funded with our debt service going down, your debt service is going up, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, obviously easier said than done, but knowing that you, the school is, you know, override question is around the corner, knowing that you're going into contract negotiations next year. You know, trying to avoid a, an override this year would, I think, would be ideal, but easier said than done, especially with the, with the held, held insurance is just like such a.
Killing all of us.
Yeah, it's just, and it's making it very hard to negotiate contracts.
It's, and it's everybody. I mean, I sit at the council on aging and hear, you know, everybody coming out, even with the Medicare, it's, it's gone up, and everybody's nervous about the, you know, the added expenses that affects them, you know, us individuals.
That they see directly.
Because they see directly. And, and, and from the study that was just done in MS Boston, you know, our, our population is at, like, within the five years, we'll be at 34% of our town of Essex.
We're already over that. Yep.
This is very helpful, thank you for sharing. I think the, the only one that you didn't speak to, if you're, if you're willing to, is current E and D balance relative to our policy targets.
So in, in towns, it's called free cash, yes.
Free cash, yeah.
And stabilization.
And stabilization.
Our, our target is at 8%, and that is 8% of the town operating plus the school operating, because that's what our auditors have suggested. We should use, last year, we pretty much spent it down to the 8% target. We had a little bit come into it, and we're gonna spend it down to the 8% target again this year. But we only use it for capital projects, we don't use it for operating. Even though money goes into free cash from the operating budget for, you know, under, underestimate of revenues and overestimate of expenses. But we only, our policy is only to use it against cash items, since this is a one-time piece of money. And the other thing that we were hoping for, that appears to be somewhat delayed, was we were hoping for additional revenue from the CST project. So we were hoping to get some building fees in for fiscal year '26, '27, and we don't know. It's, you know, federal pullback on research has created an issue. So we, we seem to have a, a two-year period that's particularly difficult. We just need to get beyond that, because then, then OPEB becomes, you know, there's just a lot of stuff that frees up in a couple of years. '27, I think, is when it's really, really tight.
Go ahead.
I, I just had a quick question regarding, is there any home construction or condo constructions? I know in Essex, we really haven't started anything yet, there's whispers. But I didn't know of Manchester, meaning adding to the school systems.
Large scale?
Well, I don't think it really matters.
We are, the challenge we have is the building we're seeing is not accept, is not predisposed for a family with young children. Prices are too high, we're seeing big stuff being built. We don't, we haven't seen anything yet from the MBTA zoning. I think there's a few things coming on, but, you know, you're talking maybe four units. I mean, you're not, and of course, building takes, what, a couple of years? So we don't have any, I mean, we have the SLV project, which is in the courts. Who knows how long that will take? There's certainly other opportunities that come up for housing in the LCD, but that's like the only place we have any land. We don't have any land to build anything out of. I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust, and we can't find any land to build even small projects.
Are you seeing construction with ADUs?
Very limited.
Not, not a ton, no.
No, the, we restricted the large ones to 1,200, which has an impact, to 1,200 square feet. We had one before the CPA, and we couldn't rent a variance, because it was used and not allowed in the district that the person resided in. And I think maybe there's been two building permits for ADUs or something like that, it's, it's, hasn't taken off yet.
Less than a handful.
Yeah. Well, we have ADUs in town that aren't listed as ADUs.
And, and so my feeling is, is with these ADUs, I mean, I'm sorry, 900 square feet may seem small to some people, but I've lived in 900 square feet, and it's a pretty good size. You could have a single family and, a single parent and two children, or a couple and one child comfortably, you know. So I just know that we have a lot of facilities, we have a lot of building permits out there right now, that I'm like, oh my God, even if just one child in every one of them, it, you know, it's gonna add to the schools. If the OSRD project goes through, it, you know, 36, four-bedroom homes.
We, we, when we had the MBTA zoning before, the finance committee did a calculation. And based on the total number of units likely to be built, which was like 30 or 40, I don't know, it was a small number. And we were, it was coming out that maybe there could be one or two new children a year. It was really minimal, because the, the area selected already had the dense housing. So it wasn't like there'd be a huge amount of new housing. So, I mean, we're very dense. You guys still have some big open properties, we don't have those. It's either water or houses are on them.
Well, we have some open properties, but we also have limited sewer capacity. You know, we have a, a call fire department. I mean, we have other capacity issues that limit, you know, the, you know, Title V. You know, we're on the marsh, we only have so much sewer capacity from Gloucester. So we have other limitations that kind of limit our building. We have the OSRD, which is 30 to 36 units, which will clearly bring, you know, kids into the school. But, I mean, ADU's the same thing, I mean, I don't disagree with Alva. You can still, you can still get a, you know, one or two kids in an ADU. And our average taxes are still hovering, that number's still hovering around 12, 12,000, 12,500 a year. So it doesn't cover eight children.
Right.
So, you know, when you add two, you know, you're more than upside down. So it's, it's concerning. And then if our seniors start to sell their properties, because they just can't afford the taxes anymore, you know that, you know, those properties are going to sell.
And those already have, and just on my street, which is only about, I don't know, 22 houses, four of them have sold, two of them have new bounds, another family has a family of four who's already in the school. So it's like, you'll go, oh, there's, it's a house on the market, and then you go, oh, and they have four kids. Nice people, but they have four kids.
You're building huge houses here, and they're probably going to private school, so.
Well, and, and one of our neighbors is, he's, he's from Manchester, he just could afford the house in Essex. So, you know, they.
Could, could Essex speak to free cash?
So free cash, you know, we did just fund our OPEB with a million dollars. We funded our tanker truck and brought our, our free cash, you know, down around the 650, 700,000 dollar mark going into the second half of the year. So our fall town meeting, which is a special town meeting, but we have one every year, is when, after we certify our free cash, you know, that is when we, we move with our expenditures. We also, you know, took money out of our vehicle stabilization fund to fund the cruiser. And our other stabilization funds are really either enterprise funds, OPEB, sale of real estate. Those are our larger ones, so probably less than a million dollars. And all of the others combined, our minimum is 5%. And all of our other combined CPA, people like to look at our, our numbers, and they think that CPA's part of, you know, stabilization, your OPEB balance is part of stabilization. So they're always a little confused on what our stabilization and free cash look like. So we fund these, these 10 or 12 stabilization funds on an annual basis, and we cut that way down this year. And only funded five, I think, this year, where we typically fund 10 or 12. So we scaled back on what we were funding in stabilization and to use the free cash to purchase the tanker and, and fund OPEB. We really need to get to where we have some room in, you know, with levy, levy capacity. We just don't have any access now, and we've got over $200,000 of retiree healthcare benefits that would really help us if we can get OPEB, OPEB fully funded and use it as our funding source and free up free cash on the other side. So, and same as you, we tried not to use any of the free cash for anything but one-time expenses.
Question on the OPEB, because our understanding when we started the trust fund was, it can always be used to fund healthcare, you don't have to wait till full funding.
Right.
If you do wait till full funding, are you going to stop fund, you're just gonna start drawing down?
No.
You're gonna fund and draw down?
There is a normal cost.
Yep.
Plus the cost of premium. So we will continue to pay the normal cost, so that we're still funding for people, for the current employees, so we're not put into the unfunded situation again. So I think our normal cost is 100 to 150,000. And I think the premiums are, I think they're currently estimated about 400,000. So the net would be 300 odd, and we're currently putting 300 odd in, so the delta's around 600,000.
So are all the OPEBs in the same type of fund? Like, I know that we've talked about ours being, getting some investment money in back, is.
We're in the state prep.
Okay, so we're all in the same.
Yep.
So it gives you a little bit better return than your money languishing and, you know, the six bags you have it in. So we're between 5 and 6%. So it's.
It's had good returns over the years.
It has. Which, which helps the situation, you know, we, it's just this last year, the last two years, really, you know, kind of moved that bar again a little bit. But we're still in a much better position, and that money's earning money, so.
What has the school?
Manchester some years ago had a problem that we had retirees who were over 65 and weren't taking Medicare. And we.
Fixed it.
Yeah, we had to do some adjustments.
We fixed that too.
Okay.
Right, I think around the same time, because I want to say it was 2010 or '11, like, right when Avi and I got here.
Ours was later than that.
Ours was later, yeah. But. So, yeah, that was one of the earlier things that were done. So at age 65, people go on.
Have to go on, yeah.
The only, unless they're still active employees.
Okay.
And.
Our active employees are forced to Medicare, aren't they? I don't know. I thought they were. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, maybe we forced, I'd love to hear that. Active to Medicare.
I don't believe we can until they stop working full-time.
It's, it's not a legal thing, because I worked at a company that did it, I want to say, 20 years ago. They, they said, anybody who's turning 65 this year, you must sign up for Medicare, we will pay you to pay for Medicare.
They still, yeah, and they still cover the supplemental insurance.
Our challenge is retirement age versus Medicare age.
Oh, that guy, yeah, it would be 65, right, yeah.
We have a, a large, a significant group of people who are between 55 and 65, who are still retired but active.
Right.
Well, yeah, we have somewhat the same problem, just the public safety employees.
Thank you all for sharing. Any other questions, comments? This is all that we have on the formal agenda, if there's anything else that anybody wants to bring up. We have a few more minutes, but I wanted to appreciate, appreciate the sharing here. And we will be having the formal hearing for the general public, of which I know many of you attend. We can continue this conversation there, but maybe have a few others in the audience with us too. But any other things to bring up while we're here?
Just a reminder, tomorrow night is the building committee, community meeting in, in Manchester, which is a recap of the first two meetings, but hopefully we'll draw a few more people from Manchester to attend. It's online too, so you don't, you don't have to come out in the cold, you can tune in.
And we know it's gonna draw some people from Essex to see the memorial building, who they've never seen.
Seen, yeah.
And that's moving right along. We are almost, I think, within a few days on the same schedule we were for the memorial project, in terms of deliverables, votes.
So, so when do you anticipate asking for appropriations from the town? And when do you anticipate actually bonding the long-term bonds?
So the discussion is on now about replicating the fall town meetings that we had for the memorial project. So it would be mid-October, next fall, for the appropriation. So we'll have, we will have, by February, we'll have like one pathway to follow. In the spring, they'll design out kind of the initial concept for that building on the site determined. That should be ready going into summer, we'll get MSBA approvals, we'll have September to promote understanding. This is the design, this is the cost. So if we have a, a meeting on or around like the October 15th date, which is what I think we used.
We've always had November.
Well, we did a, we did a special, special town meeting.
Oh, okay.
And they were night, one night after the other, it was.
Okay.
Essex, then Manchester, Manchester, then Essex, and then everybody voted in November, when they went to the ballot, so that everyone would know at the same time.
Did I hear you say earlier that there is a ongoing conversation with the towns about the bonding strategy?
Not yet, we're starting to have that conversation. So that will include how much, when, like, there's, for the, for the middle, high school, you did a bunch, we did short-term right in the beginning, and then moved to a larger in the end.
Memorial, you did long-term during the project.
Yeah, and they went right away, so I think that's up for debate.
And we're looking for pushing out long-term.
Yep, we're hearing, so we just had a. Yep, we're hearing, so we just had an initial information gathering um with kind of, with the town managers. We're gonna talk, start to talk to um, what is it, Southwest now?
Hilltop.
Hilltop.
I don't know, they keep changing their names.
Yeah, we're gonna start to roll that out. We're actually about five months ahead of time on that schedule from where we were on the memorial project, but.
Yeah, this is Brendan, I I think it's important to point out that whether the towns have a um have town meetings in the fall of twenty-six versus the spring of twenty-seven, due to the implementation date of the project, it probably will have no bearing on when the repayment commencement begins. That that we did get down to, and that's important because um one or the other is not gonna change when each town can expect to commence repayment.
And that's what's important to us.
Yep. So that's all kind of a work in progress. We're gonna get some initial very high-level estimate ranges at the December fifteenth meeting, so we'll start to see which of the scenarios on the table may or may not cost more than the other.
Early, early, early on the discussion of the Essex Elementary School, I heard or imagined that the current school, which was designed for K through eight, I think, was so, was large enough so that if they were to build a new school, it would have to be smaller. Is that still the case?
You need more space now.
And it's some of the core pe- pieces that need the more space, like the the kitchen, the cafeteria. And then what might, I think what they were talking about, if we're thinking about a similar conversation, is the size of the classrooms may actually be smaller square footage per MSBA than they were when Essex was designed. For a new build.
Right.
For a new build.
Interesting.
But you're gonna
Because you have more special classrooms.
You need more special classrooms, so like for pre-K, K, they're real, they're bigger than if for one to five. Um, we're gonna be putting pre-K there, so that's actually added space. I think your special ed in small group spaces add to your square footage as do the I think the concept right now for discussion, once we pick a direction, would be, do you want a full-size gym? Or do you wanna an elementary-sized gym, things like that? All of the same debates that we had for the memorial school.
Would the full-size, now I'm getting way in the weeds, full-size gym be MSBA reimbursable?
If we can show that it's part of the program, if you remember that conversation in the middle high school and the tennis courts and the fields.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think there's more than enough to show, as we were able to with memorial school, that those sites host um part of the athletics program and they're also a large community hub for youth service.
The youth doesn't get reimbursement, if I remember.
No, but if if partnerships with the commu- with the community are
Valuable.
So I I'm hopeful. So these are all the types of questions we can talk about um at tomorrow night's meeting. And then I I would say tune in on the fifteenth to start to hear how each of them are shaping up financially.
And I'll have to apologize, cause me and just the finance committee is meeting Wednesday night. So we won't be able to attend.
But if it's a repeat, I mean, the the recordings are pretty good and you can get an idea of what was, what's been discussed in the last
Wednesday's the budget hearing.
Wednesday's the budget here, right?
Yep. Tomorrow night is the beginning.
And do we have a tentative that you've passed out yet, or is it coming?
It's out and
Oh, is the budget?
Yeah, it's all sent to the
Okay.
So I think we're targeting by February tenth to have an adopted budget.
We also, we'll send out the updated budget module with that as well, so you guys can play with that, is that's just it?
Thank you, Michelle.
When do you get your insurance number?
Say that's the
February tenth, it's aggressive.
Yeah, we don't get our final number till about March.
So it's not a final budget.
How do you get a final budget in February? We keep asking them for updated projections.
Where did we land for this year's health insurance?
It was lower than expected.
So we decreased the budget at the last minute and actually threw the towns off because we saved about eighty thousand dollars at the last minute change.
So our approach last year was to say, here's the number as we know it when we adopted it. And and then we basically agreed as a school committee, if the number comes in lower, we will
Come pass it on.
We will pass it on, which, we pass it on at the last moment, but
Right. The cause of timing issues for towns, I guess.
But this has always been the case, cause I remember when you and I were on the school committee together. And I don't remember if it was just seventy finding or if it was one of the others. But there was a large amount and we, as we, the FinCom, sub-FinCom committee had to decide, do we pass this back to the towns or do we keep it? And we passed it back to the towns. So, I mean, I think it's happened. Sometimes you don't get actual numbers until June and whose budget's not done by then, I mean.
State numbers, we don't ever get until July.
Right.
Um, so those are all estimates. And healthcare, in good years, good years, we'll try to be conservative and bad years, we'll probably, we'll go as tight as we can. Hopefully, we'll get better news and start to look at some alternative solutions if we can in January, February. I I recall last year, we started talking about override scenarios at the very last minute, which was more disruptive than the thought of reducing the budget.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
No, we just have to
I I don't think, I think we'll
Adjust the FinCom report.
We'll try to get it
So we don't have to rewrite it at the tenth hour to have it
By that beginning of March time, right.
We're welcome to hang on to the money, but
No, we don't want you to, that's the challenge, and we have to go to press, cause it all has to be distributed in the mail.
It's that go-to press thing that's the killer.
Okay, thank you all for the time today and the insights and sharing. Uh, we will uh reconvene as many of you as can um at the Wednesday budget, school committee budget hearing meeting Wednesday evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.